We need to open the meeting. I need to... You want to do it after roll call?
After roll call.
Okay. Let's do it after the pledge, no? Carlos? Before after pledge? After the pledge, okay. Are we ready? Can I open the meeting? Welcome, one and all. Today is Tuesday, April 14th at 12:08. This is the City of West Miami Special Virtual Meeting for the Determination of Office of Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Madam Clerk, I'm going to yield to you for the participant instructions, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The clerk's audio is off. I think it was being heard through someone else's.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes a difference, but hardly heard anything.
Clearly hear what she was saying?
I also received a text from my phone, and the audio is not completely dedicated to this.
Should I repeat again?
I recommend to lower the volume.
Now, 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 now it's clear. Before, it wasn't clear at all. It was coming else through someone else's audio. So everybody should turn their audio except for the city clerk.
Okay, so let's... Everybody with your phones. Let's have... I need everyone to go on mute. Everyone go on mute.
The vice mayor's microphone is still open. Okay.
Is the vice mayor mute?
Yes.
Is he mute?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please... Your audio was not on, please. Give the participant instructions, information, once again, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Instructions to participate in the virtual commission meeting Instructions to access the virtual meeting by phone. When you connect, the ID of the meeting is 3255236059, then followed by the pound sign. Welcome. Mayor Wanda Rodriguez. Present. Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez. Is present. Here I can see Mr. Suarez. Commissioner Candy Blanca.
Yes.
Is present. She's here. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
And Commissioner Diaz-Padrón is present here in chambers. You have a quarrel, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we can all ride on the train, please. Pursuant to the methodology approved in yesterday's
Somebody's feeding me.
Our Chief of Police, Carlos Avila, will, at this time, scramble up the cups. Thank you, sir. And as approved yesterday, we will have our commissioners come up one at a time and choose their cup, which will determine the length of their term. And we will be doing this alphabetically with Commissioner Candy Blanca first to the table to choose her...
Madam Mayor. Just for the record, we have still item three, which is public comments, and we have not received any public comments at this time. And then if we proceed, if you allow me, with item four, which are the special agenda items.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Item four, special agenda items. Item four A. Determination by lot of the Office of Vice Mayor and Commissioners pursuant to city charter, section 303D. And this was according to a legal opinion by Mr. Villalobos. The terms will be Vice Mayor, two years as Vice Mayor, and two years as Commissioner. Commissioner for four years as Commissioner. And Commissioner, two years as Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the first commissioner, Madam Clerk, to the table.
Yes, Madam Mayor. According to what was determined by the commissioner at the meeting of April 13, 2020, the first person who make this selection will be Commissioner Candy Blanca. Commissioner Blanca, please proceed.
Please call the next commissioner to the table, Madam Clerk.
The second commissioner to proceed with the determination by lot of the Office of Commissioner in terms will be Commissioner Diaz-Padrón. Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the next commissioner to the table.
And now, please, Vice Mayor Suarez, please proceed to make your selection.
Mayor, I have a question. If those of you here are...
I asked you...
Because I'm here, how many? One number to get. If they get the call, I'll get...
Clerk will make an announcement as to the...
I still... I don't have to make it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's item...
Yes, Madam Mayor. As the result of the determination and the selection by the commission members, Commissioner Diaz... Commissioner Blanca selected four years. Commissioner Diaz-Padrón selected four years. And Vice Mayor Suarez selected two years. At this time, we will ask, following the proper distance, Commissioner Blanca and Commissioner Diaz-Padrón to please approach the table where a coin will be flipped in order to determine the office of the Vice Mayor and Commissioner for four years. Commissioner Blanca, please stay near. You should select now. So, meaning that Commissioner Diaz-Padrón will be Vice Mayor for a period of two years and Commissioner for a period of two years. And Commissioner Blanca will be a Commissioner for four years. And Vice Mayor Suarez will be a Commissioner for a period of two years. You may be seated. Now, Madam Mayor. If you would like to proceed with the meeting, that'll be basically my report. If you would like to take a break, like we discussed yesterday at the April 13, 2020 meeting, you can either take a break and we can reconvene or continue until a date and time certain of 1:00, or you may proceed with the meeting. If you have any other item for discussion, it is entirely up to the commission and up to you as a body.
Madam Mayor, I think we have everyone on here. So you think we should maybe just do it now? Because, I mean, the problem we were talking about before was that we weren't we weren't going to be a part of the computer. So, I mean, if everyone, I mean, everyone wants to, if you would like to, we can just do it now. And not have to come back.
We cannot hear. We cannot hear.
That's because I was on mute. My apologies. I thank you, Commissioner Flashback, Mr. Diaz-Padrón, for that suggestion. We did decide yesterday that we were going to take a break because we thought we all had to go back to our personal computers. But we are all here, so as I said, we're not going to take a break. We're going to proceed with the meeting. So the next item is the good of the order.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item five, good of the order.
I have a good of order of the order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, pursuant to issues in the Gilberto and Teresa Uribe and Banyum Health Care Center versus City West Miami, case number 2019-00341. I am, at this point, requesting an executive session to be held as soon as possible as emergency issues have emerged, which I think should be handled as soon as possible. So therefore, I'm requesting for the clerk to advise what is the earliest possible time that she can put that in the newspaper and announce that the same report will...
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, you're not on audio. Oh, I thought you were... Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm not sure if we could hear the clerk, but she's saying that we could have it as early as April 28th or 29th, if I'm correct. Madam Clerk? So, April 28th or 29th? Mr. Attorney, or either of those dates acceptable with you?
It's acceptable to me, but if at all possible, Madam Clerk, can we do that before?
I apologize. I didn't hear you. What was your question, Mr. Attorney?
Attorney, yes, it's okay, April 28th, but I would like to find out from the clerk. Do it before.
So you say when to meet. I apologize. I can't hear you. I can't hear the attorney correctly.
Adam Cookby was asking if we could do it prior to the 28th or 29th.
Prior to the 28th? It all depends of how would you like to advertise having extended window. It will be tied on time, but it is up to the newspaper. I have to contact the newspaper to see how are they are working with the COVID-19 situation right now.
If we do that, then advise us and send an invite, please. I think that Commissioner Blanca has a question.
Question, Blanca?
My question is, why do we need another executive meeting? That is costing a lot of money to us.
I have to caution everyone, this is not an agenda item. This is simply the city attorney with a request for an executive session. Mr. Attorney, is it proper to discuss? To discuss the request of... Mr. Attorney?
I can't understand what you're saying, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner... Commissioner Blanca, please repeat your question to the attorney.
Why do we need another executive meeting? That is costing a lot of money. We have to report the attorney.
We have a dire emergency which requires for me pursue to 28601, rent A of the Florida statue. West, that we have an executive session. And I understand that this costs money. The only money that is going to cost us extra at this point is the advertising of the fact that we're going to have a court reporter. But this is a dire emergency, which I think that must be had, and I cannot discuss that in public. I can discuss it in private with my clients, which is the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Manager, I believe I saw your hand up a moment ago. Did you have something? You'll have to unmute, unmute.
Can't hear.
He can't hear.
Unmute the mic.
I'm advised. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I am advised that if I unmute my mic, it may create an interference with the mayor's computer because of the proximity. Madam Mayor, what I was going to recommend is...
Can't hear.
You're gone again, Madam Manager.
Can't hear.
The cat... No. Let me see if I can unmute you from here. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Madam Mayor. I was only going to recommend, if it's acceptable legally, that we take like a 10-minute break here so that the oath of office can be prepared by the Office of the City Clerk. Since the commissioners are here, I'm sure that they would like to take their oath of office before they leave today.
I understand it, but this matter has to be. My advice is that we can have it. And the clerk is going to advise all when we can have it. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
I don't think we're talking about the same thing. Sorry. I'm talking about the oath of office. Not the litigation.
We have not finished the item of the executive session. Are we netting?
Why don't we do one at a time?
Okay, Madam Clerk. Is the 28th of April pursuant to...
Yes. Then this is the executive session of April 28th. You decide, Madam Mayor.
This will be April 28th. Commissioner...
You know, I can't hear a thing. You guys need to shut your mics down and speak one at a time, especially in that room that you're all so close. All three mics were on, so I couldn't hear a word you said, Madam Mayor.
One second, Commissioner, and I'm going to try to fix this right now.
Now you can... Now I can hear you fine.
Okay, I believe I have... Everyone on mute.
Would you repeat again, Madam Clerk?
Yes. I asked you. It's April 28th. Pursuant to...
There can only be one mic on at a time. If not, we don't hear anything.
I believe I have everyone on mute. Can you hear better now, sir?
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Yes, May 28th at 10:00 AM is fine, Mr. Attorney.
Okay, thank you. If there is any change... If there is any change, I'd advise the clerk.
I'm sorry, April. April. I apologize.
The executive session will be April 28th at 10:00 AM. Is that Vice Mayor? Commissioner Suarez, April 28th at 10:00 AM? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Blanca, April 28th at 10:00 AM. Executive session, April 28th at 10:00 AM. Anything else on that item, Mr. Attorney?
No. If there is any change, I'll let you know.
Thank you, sir. And now, Madam Manager. You had a request.
Madam Mayor, for your consideration, none of the re-elected commissioners, since they are, the three of them are here maintaining their social distance, you may want to take a break and reconvene at a time certain so that the clerk can administer the oath of office while they are present here in chambers.
Do I have any objection to that?
At all times, we have to have a...
Okay.
Commissioner Blanca? Mr. Attorney, we're taking a break. I'm not... I am not agreeing with you. We're taking a break. So I don't need for him to bring a break. We're taking a break. What she needs for the oath of office. So...
I can't hear anything. I didn't hear anything. Madam Manager, you need to turn your mic off.
It's off, sir.
I got it. I muted. We are taking a break. We will reconvene the meeting at 1:00.
1:00.
Commissioner Blanas, did you hear?
No, you know, it's all... I hear echo. I hear... No, I did not.
I have everybody on mute. Hold on.
Okay, now I can hear you good.
Okay. We are going to take a break so the clerk can go downstairs to prepare the oaths of office, and we will reconvene the meeting at 1:00 PM.
Perfect. We need to do this every time, because if not, it sounds horrible, you know. You get everybody's feedback, so we need to learn to, after we speak... Turn... While we...
Commissioner, I lost...
Say something, then turn it back on.
You're there. Okay, I lost you for a moment. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'm going to call for a break until 1:00 PM.